Mayor Mahler.
Present.
Counselor Gerson.
Counselor Trask.
Present.
Counselor Gorley.
Present.
Counselor Coleman.
Present.
Counselor Sanchez.
Here.
Counselor Richards.
Let the record show I have six present with one absent. Counselor Richards called me this evening and he has a migraine, won't make it this evening. That time need to ask for approval, absence.
So moved.
I'll second it.
My roll call, please.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Let the record show all six eyes and one absent, approval, counsel Richard's absence. Uh, consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I'll buy a roll call, please.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Six eyes, one absent, approval, consent agenda. Before we get into recognition of visitor hearing petitions this evening, um, we are going to be doing some special recognition. You know, I think my fellow counselors will agree, um, you know, we look at our everyday jobs, we look at our roles as city councilor, and we sometimes think we have thankless jobs. But in no way does it compare to the role of a police officer. I know that they look upon it as a rewarding career, but they put their lives on the line. And they put up with a lot of crap. And they deserve recognition. It's a lot of times they don't get. We are very blessed as a community to have a law enforcement agency that we have. The community should be greatly blessed by it. Led by knowing Chief Lynn when he was here, but also, um, Chief Ogden. They're doing a phenomenal job. And like I said, there's a lot of times our officers are not recognized. Tonight, we are going to recognize them. Excuse me for being emotional because I care a lot about this matter. They went over and recalled duty, over and above their call of duty. We need to recognize them. Sergeant Ryan Cummings, Sean Potter, officer, Officer Jeff Hamlin. And we have one other recognition that we're also going to bring up here. At this time, want to turn it over to, um, our city manager, Kelsey Young.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I need to second what our mayor just said. We are so blessed to have you all in our community and we are doubly blessed because you saved lives in our community as you do routinely and you brought these people back to us. So I'm going to start to cry too. So I just want to say from the bottom of our hearts, thank you for being in this community, for your constant, constant diligence and dedication to the community and especially in this time where officers are not always respected and appreciated the way they should be. So if everyone would please stand and join me in our officers and then I can turn it over. So Chief Ogden, would you start us off?
I will. Um, Sergeant Cummings and Detective Hamlin, would you please come forward before counsel for me, please? Um, I just want to second everything that, uh, the mayor and our city manager said, and, um, I have the privilege of working, uh, with each and every one of these officers every single day and, um, probably spend more time with them than we do with some of our family members, right? I mean, eight, 10, 12 hours a day and these guys and gals are phenomenal and I want you to know that, um, they go above and beyond and actually truly care for our community and for each other. The council, uh, when I gave the department update last time, uh, regarding Penny and just, uh, the, the swift actions, uh, that our members performed at the police department regarding Penny, um, wanted to honor, uh, these two officers right here who, um, just went above and beyond and, uh, really just made a huge difference, um, in somebody's life. Uh, we do have an awards, uh, process that we go through. However, um, it takes a while when we order these life-saving awards for them to come in the mail. So we wanted to do something sooner rather than later. So, um, you guys have been nominated by myself for the life-saving award, uh, for Penny Leland and, um, and, uh, it's already gone through the process. It's been approved. I've already ordered those medals, but we wanted to get something to you guys sooner rather than later. I had, uh, I want to counsel to know that I had our other sergeant, uh, David Hickox, uh, look into the award nomination. And I just want to read you the memo that he, uh, wrote to me, um, so that you guys all know, uh, exactly how this went down. And he says, Chief Ogden, on October 12th, 2022, Penny Leland suffered from a life-threatening medical episode while on duty at the Sweet Home Police Department. Uh, he says, I was not working on this day, but I have talked to many who were and learned just about, uh, every person present in the building that day assisted in some way or another, and all should be recognized for their actions. However, there were two officers who did take action that based on what was explained to me had a significant and direct impact on saving Penny's life. Uh, these two officers were Sergeant Cummings and Detective Hamlin. Uh, the following will be a summary of what was explained to me that happened that day. Uh, dispatcher Lyon heard a bang coming from Penny's office and she investigated. CSO Morgan did as well. They found Penny on the floor and it was said that Penny was having trouble breathing and likely seizing. Uh, dispatcher Lyon told dispatcher man to call 911 and then called out to Sergeant Cummings, who was in the office for help. Uh, Detective Hamlin came to Penny's aid and shortly after Sergeant Cummings. Detective Hamlin noticed Penny was face down on the floor. He rolled her over and began checking for a pulse. Sergeant Cummings observed, uh, food in Penny's mouth, so he removed the debris and started checking for a pulse as well. Penny's condition, uh, was not improving after assessment, so Sergeant Cummings asked for a CPR mask. An unknown employee retrieved a mask and Sergeant Cummings began rescue breaths. A request for the department's AED was fulfilled and Detective Hamlin assisted Sergeant Cummings in setting it up. Before the AED could be completely set up and utilized, the Sweet Home medics arrived and took over, uh, as primary care. While the medics were providing rescue breaths, Sergeant Cummings began chest compressions. Uh, the following are portions of Facebook posts from Penny's daughter, Cassie Ritchie, who works at the Sweet Home Fire Department. Quote unquote, "We could all use prayers, use all the prayers we can get right now for my mom Penny Leland. She went into cardiac arrest at work and I'm thankful for her amazing coworkers who started CPR and my amazing coworkers who did what they do. For my boss who drove me all the way to Corrales, Becky, uh, for reminding me to breathe and everyone in between. My mom and I worked with some pretty amazing people who are, um, who are the only reason she is here today. Everyone should know how to do CPR. My mom's coworkers' quick actions starting CPR right away saved her life and I hope they all know how much I appreciate them." Sergeant Hickox says, "I know from my training and experience that in medical emergencies, uh, such as cardiac arrest, the first 10 minutes are critical. I'm therefore recommending the life-saving award for Sergeant Cummings and Detective Ha- Hamlin." Um, "The life-saving medal, uh, may be awarded to the member who through his or her self-initiated action significantly and directly contributed to the saving of a human life without unnecessarily placing the member's own life, uh, at peril." And so, um, Sergeant Cummings and Detective Hamlin, um, I am honored to present to you with, uh, these plaques. Uh, both of these plaques have their name on it and it says, "This is awarded, uh, or this award is presented to Jeff Hamlin and Ryan, Sergeant Ryan Cummings for their actions that saved a human life on October 14th, 2022. Your fast thinking, swift and perfectional, professional actions saved the life of a fellow employee. The community and the city of Sweet Home, thank you." Thank you so much, guys. Um, I'm so proud of you and I'm, it's such an honor to, uh, work with people like you. It's, it's just awesome and I'm so thankful for that. So, thank you.
Mayor, if I may, uh, with our history from the fire district, um, then hundreds and hundreds of times I've went on cardiac rest and I'm telling you, the vast majority did not make it out of there and they probably saved their life. For sure. No doubt about it.
And I, um, I wanted to also thank, um, the wives who are here tonight. I know the sacrifice that you all make also as, uh, both your husbands go to work every day. Uh, the probably sleepless nights, uh, without them there at home. And so, um, I just want you to know that I'm thankful for you and, um, uh, just super thankful that your husbands, uh, work here for the city. Then, yeah, yes.
We have to clap the wives. And also one more before you go into the next one. Um, Mayor, if I may, so while you weren't directly involved, um, Chief Ogden, we do want to honor you as well. You were a perfect leader during this instance. You communicated, you led your team, you stayed calm. You did everything that a police chief needed to do. So we just, and, and you were just barely into your intro, so just well done. So.
Also do want to have a shout out to our fire department, um, a quick response. We've got some of the best paramedics doing this.
Yeah, and I will, and I will second that. Um, I remember, um, it was just amazing to, to be there and the fire chief, uh, Nick Tyler, he was, um, he was right there. He was sitting on the ground and, uh, actually just attending to Penny. And so it was a powerful picture of your top leader there serving in a way that, um, it's just powerful. And so I'm, I'm super thankful for, for Nick and, uh, his crew that also helped out. It was, it was great. Um, the next one, uh, Officer Sean Potter, why don't you come up? This one has been a long time coming. Um, Sean Potter was nominated for the life-saving award for an incident that occurred actually, uh, last year, uh, December of 2021. Um, he was nominated, it went through, uh, an awards process. We ordered the medal and it finally got here. It took a long time, but it finally got here. And I want to read the memorandum that, uh, actually Sergeant Cummings, uh, wrote to me nominating, uh, Officer Potter for this life-saving medal. Uh, Sergeant Cummings says, "The purpose of this memorandum is to nominate Officer Sean Potter for the life-saving medal." Uh, "The basis for the nomination comes from the information provided from a police report, uh, from last year, as well as statements that were made to him by Sergeant Hickox." And it was on December 23rd, 2021 that Officer Potter was, uh, on duty. He was actually a field training officer that day and had Officer, uh, Penniger with him. And about 4:30 PM, they were dispatched to a motor vehicle crash, uh, that involved injuries on Main Street near like, uh, Truax Town Pump area. And I was actually on at that time too. Um, and was at that call. Uh, the operator of the motorcycle, uh, ended up hitting a Jeep and, uh, the operator of the motorcycle was injured as a result of that. Um, Officer Penniger's report states the following. There were several people next to, uh, the victim or Curtis already helping him out and Officer Potter went over to assess his injuries. Uh, Officer Potter saw a lot of blood coming from Curtis's right leg and tourniquet on it. And so dispatch, uh, advised us that the medics had already been dispatched and the medics advised Officer Potter that, uh, Curtis had multiple fractures on his right leg from his, uh, hip up. Um, Officer Potter had mentioned to Sergeant Cummings later on that based on his extensive medical training provided during military service, that the motorcycle operator uh, had a severed artery which led to applying the tourniquet. Uh, Sergeant Hickox advised, uh, Sergeant Cummings that within the past week, the motorcycle operator uh, brought in a box of hot chocolate as a thank you and said his doctor told him that he would have died uh, from blood loss if not for the quick and effective actions of Officer Potter. Um, so yeah, Officer Potter, we are super thankful, uh, for your actions. Um, the, the victim in this crash, uh, it has not only been in one time to bring in hot chocolate, but numerous times this last year. He is super thankful, uh, for Officer Potter, uh, applying that tourniquet and, um, you had a direct impact on somebody's life that, uh, lives in this community. And I mean, what more can I say? I mean, that is just phenomenal and, uh, we're so thankful for your service. I'm thankful to be, to be your chief and, uh, we're going to present you with this same award. It says, "This award is printed, presented to, uh, Sean Potter for his actions that saved a human life on December 23rd, 2021." Uh, "The community and the city of Sweet Home, thank you for your bravery and recognize the hero within you as your actions lead, uh, led to the saving of a life." And along with this, we have a very, uh, cool, uh, medal uh, with a pen and all of you can hopefully see that, but, uh, is Hannah here tonight? Hannah, do you want to come up and pin this on him? And we also have some flowers for you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, could we request just a two minute to thank our officers and then let their families file out if they wish? Okay, we're going to take a quick break while we all thank our officers and families are welcome to stay or you all can head out. So.
Very good. And like I say, Chief, good job. Before we go into another presentation, um, um, we have any citizens that like come forth, be heard before counsel this evening? I'd be, uh, name an address for the record, please.
Yeah, Bill McKinnon, I live here in Sweet Home, out of Foster. And I've talked to officers, a couple of different officers in the police department there. I ain't very good talker. And, uh, their, their hands were tied. There's people camping on streets all over on motor homes and fifth wheels and everything else. They tag them. And they still stay there a week after they tag them and they can't do nothing about it. And one, one motor home in particular, it's orange and it's parked all over town. I don't know if everybody's seen it. And he drives around, you see it. It's parked all over town. No insurance on it, no license plates on it. I was told the drivers don't even have driver's license. Been me or you, they, they throw a book at us and the officers are tied. They, I've talked to them and they said, "Talk to the city." I, maybe you need to put no camping signs on all the, all the, all the, all the streets around here, no camping. Exactly what they're doing. They're, they're homeless, they're camping all over. They're not going to camp in front of my house. Park a motor home camp there and for a week and then, well, it's been on my Langmac Field or 18th or they're all over. That one guy goes all over. I don't even know where he's at now. Don't care, but I think something needs to be done about all these motor homes, fifth wheels camping all over town. Or, but I don't know what you guys can do about it, but officers can't do nothing about it. Don't look like.
Well, we, as a council, we were, we were trying to address this. I mean, we're looking at ordinance, things we can legally do. I mean, a lot of times our hands are tied too.
Well, officers said they can't do nothing because they live, live in. But it, they impound cars, like at the impound vehicles with no insurance.
I'm taking. Fire or Kelsey, kind of give a tell of background of our, why our hands are tied.
Yeah, well, there's a couple of different areas here. One, there's, there's camping outside of an RV and that's, that's being addressed, addressed in other areas. And there's some court cases that keep us from moving people along if there's nowhere for them to go. It's debatable whether that actually applies to RVs or camp trailers. Recently, there was a Ninth Circuit case that, um, reviewed a, a case out of, uh, Grants Pass. And it essentially said that cities have to allow car camping if, uh, and but it didn't specifically address RVs. That's the, the kind of gray area that we don't, we don't know exactly how it would be looked at by a court, but at this point, there's not a specific violation that, uh, that we would be violating if we came down harder on that. The biggest problem is, we certainly could beef up our ordinances to, uh, cut down on RVs and trailers being allowed. The problem is having an ordinance is one thing, being able to enforce it is a completely different thing. If someone is, a lot of times these folks are already disobeying the, the parking ordinances that we have. And so if they're already disobeying those, uh, they probably would disobey a, a more stringent ordinance. If we are going to enforce more, we would need to also look at, um, what it would cost to essentially to impound these vehicles. The problem, you can impound a car and find a tow, a tow company that's willing to tow it because that car has some sort of value. And the tow company can always hold on to it until the owner pays the fees. Or ultimately, if it's abandoned, they can sell off that, that vehicle. Problem with RVs is how much they cost to impound. Nobody wants them. If, if the owner abandons them and the tow company takes it, nobody wants to take on that RV or that trailer. And so the company, the tow company is left with this useless piece of equipment that nobody will take and nobody will buy. And often they are difficult to dispose of because of, um, the environmental concerns, those, the, the waste that might be involved or some of these have asbestos and the older ones do. And so they are quite costly to dispose of. Chief, you might be able to tell how much it costs to dispose of an RV.
So yeah, it costs right around in the ballpark of $4,000. And just so you know, um, yeah, we, we recognize the issue. We, we have been towing them, um, not many, but we have, uh, the ones that have been posted that don't move, um, you know, by the, by the marked date. Over the last handful of months, we've probably towed, oh, I would say three. And I know we just towed one here within this last week. So we're making progress, slow but sure. Uh, we're trying to hold people, uh, you know, accountable for, for that. And so, but we, we, we recognize the frustration and the concern that you have for sure. Um, and we're trying to do the best that we can.
Okay, I just thought I'd bring it up. Thank you for coming and addressing the flaws.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add one more piece, um, there are a few other things that different cities are looking into and we are trying to find some alternatives that we're hoping to bring back to the council at a later date as well.
Anybody else that like come forth, be heard before counsel? This time we'll go into the presentation of Grove Mueller and Swank Audit.
Good evening. First of all, there is no way. Okay, uh, my name is Ryan Pascarella. Um, I work for Grove Mueller and Swank. We are a CPA firm out of Salem, Oregon. Um, so I'm here to present, um, the audit for the fiscal year ending June 30th, uh, 2021. Um, but back to what I was originally going to say, I cannot compete with that first presentation in any way whatsoever. So that was wonderful. I'm glad I was here for that one. Um, so it's been a few years since my firm has been in front of the city council presenting, uh, the financial statements. Yes, I'll blame 2020. Lots of things happened in 2020 that, um, lots of meetings didn't happen that normally would have happened. Um, but. But over the past couple of years, the city isn't as timely on getting the audits completed. And so it's been a while since I've been sitting here or somebody from my firm has been sitting here. So I want to present the June 30, 2021 audit for you. It was finished in August of this year. And my name was on the calendar or the agenda a couple of different times to be here and it didn't quite work out for me. But I'm glad I get to be here this evening and talk about it a little bit. Really, the reason I'm here, I want questions. If you have questions related to kind of what's happening, I'm going to talk a little bit about the audit that is here. But ultimately, this is pretty old information at this point. I mean, we're already through another fiscal year. So I'm not going to get into details about the numbers themselves like we have historically done. I just kind of want to talk to you about the audit itself and kind of the outcome of the audit that happened. So first of all, the city is required to receive an independent audit from somebody licensed with the state of Oregon as a municipal auditor. And so my firm, we have four municipal auditors at this point. We do approximately 80 audits annually for different cities and organizations within the state. So the audit is required to be completed within six months of the end of your fiscal year, which would have been December 31, 2021. There are extensions that are allowed by the audits division. There were a few extensions that were allowed by the state, but we kind of ran out of those. And so it was actually filed late per what the state was saying. And I'm sure none of this is a big surprise to you in this sense. This has been going on a little bit here. So what I want to talk to you about is there's basically the financial statements themselves. It took quite a bit of work in order to get them so that they are materially accurate for reporting purposes. There was a lot of back and forth between, you know, city employees and us just trying to figure out how to fix some of these balances, including kind of the bank reconciliation process and just making sure your imbalances are correct. So there was a lot of investigation by city people and just a lot of back and forth within it. Saying that, this audit, it is getting a clean opinion. We feel that there are no material errors within this document. It just took a while to get there. So in that sense, you get a clean opinion here. The one trick related to it is there were so many adjustments that we had to recommend as auditors in order to make this accurate. We issued a separate letter that really talks about the internal controls of the city. And so when we write a letter related to internal controls, there's really two levels of a deficiency that we potentially could be reporting. One is called a significant deficiency, which is, yeah, you need to fix this stuff. If there's two or three of these issues, you might be materially incorrect, excuse me, in your numbers in here. The next level up is called a material weakness, which basically means just based on the process you currently have, there's a real risk that there could be material errors within here. So we ended up issuing a letter and it's really called, the title of the deficiency is called account reconciliations. It covers pretty much every area of like your balance sheet, your cash, your accounts receivable. You know, there were just material errors in the numbers that we got. So we issued a letter, a material weakness letter. You should have gotten all of this a couple of months ago, I would imagine. And so if you have questions related, I'm happy to answer that. But ultimately, what we're saying is the city needs to have, make some serious improvements in the processes in order for you as a city to generate your own correct financial information without a lot of back and forth with the auditors. And ultimately, that's why it took as long as it did in order for the audit to be completed. As part of the audit as well, there is, what we always talk about is there is a letter to the city council. It's a governance letter. It walks through the goods and the bads kind of of the audit itself. What this is going to say is the audit was not timely. You were not in compliance with the audits division related to it. But ultimately, we got complete help from the city. I mean, nobody was fighting back with us in order to get us the information. It took a while. But we were happy with the communication back and forth. And it was just, we needed things a little bit faster in there. As part of this letter, and I'm sorry, you're going to have to be an accountant if you want to truly understand. But we attached all of the adjustments that were needed based on when we got, okay, let's start the audit to this document here. And there were I know the suspense. There were 27 different adjustments that we recommended as part of the audit. Some of those were pretty darn, you know, small things. Some of them are much larger. It took quite a bit to get know that things have changed since the 21 audit. I know that Matt Brown is in and he has been assisting and asking me some, some good questions. We're still behind at this point with getting the audits completed. But in my mind, you're in a lot, than you were for the 21 year at this point. I haven't started auditing any numbers yet for 22, but we'll get there. It is kind of what it is. And so that's due at the end of December here. I will probably ask for extensions just from how busy my firm is at this particular point. But ultimately, the goal is to file timely with this as well. In this document, there were a couple of in the back of the financial statements, there is a report that we write. The audits division asks us to look at things besides just the numbers that are in here. Things specific to the ORS's procurement, your local budget process, where, what banks your money's being held in is properly collateralized, things like that. And so we end up, if we find anything that we feel needs to be reported as non-compliance with ORS, it ends up on the back page here. What you, what you would see is in here, there's a couple of things related to the kind of the budgeting. Some spending more than you would appropriated in one of your funds. You have one fund that has a negative balance in it, which for budgeting purposes, you shouldn't have a negative balance at the end of the year, negative cash or something in it. And it really relates to the timing of getting things recorded, I think, in your system, making sure you know where your budget is. And do you need to do a supplemental budget or something like that related to it? And then the third one was just a timeliness that we reported related to. So this is the exact opposite presentation than what happened earlier. I get that. But we have historically given you very good reports to the city. I know there's a hiccup here in kind of what's happening related to it. But like I said, I'm optimistic with who you have in place now. So I would love to answer any questions that you have, Kelsey, if you have questions or anything or other comments.
No, thank you for going over all of that. Really appreciate it.
I'm not sure you do, but you don't like what I said, but.
Okay, because it gives us a lot of the things that you already talked about, we're already implementing and it gives us a baseline of how we're going to move forward. So we appreciate that.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Is it common to ask for an extension every year?
I would say probably 20% of my clients ask for an extension every year. I will say that the audits division is deciding that they don't like that. And if you have asked for an extension two or three years in a row, the audits division is starting to say, no, you need to do something else. Clearly, there's a process problem in place in your organization. So, but last few years especially, yes. I mean, there has been quite a few extensions.
I do understand some of them, at least not the, the 20, 20, 2020, I understand that with the COVID thing. But, but the other two, I don't know if, to be honest with you, I've never, I've never been in a situation with my nine years here that has this situation happened.
Right.
You know, and I called the state of Oregon and asked them about the situation and they said that they could have shut down our money, our full money. And, and that scares the dickens out of me.
Yeah. And, yeah, they can withhold the the DAS money that comes through. That is one, the one thing that the audits division has the ability to do at this point. Other than, I mean, there is a report that goes to the legislature for delinquent violers as well. And that's on the audits division website.
You said that it's still not quite done, so.
Yeah, 22 isn't done at this point. Yeah, 21 was done in August of this year. Yeah.
Yeah, we were so far behind that. You know, there's so many things that came up that it just I can't even explain how bad I feel about this because it's, it's a mess. It wasn't a mess. It was a mess for six more months than it should have been. And here we are, just now in November, getting the report from you, which we've been pretty good at getting those. You got them pretty good. You know, 2020 was a bad day, you know, and all that stuff. But this, this was not good.
No. And I will say, I mean, you did hire a consultant to come in and kind of look at some of the internal processes related to the reconciliations and kind of set up a plan to prepare for our visit and to get the information ready. And talking with the consultant, he called me kind of at the end of the process, just to kind of let me know, you know, what the final outcome was and kind of what he recommended to the city. Really turning it into a project-based, you know, task where you have deadlines starting immediately. And you're going to do this, this, and this, well before you even see us as auditors. So I really hope that that type of plan is going to be in place and assist us in getting us done more timely.
And that wasn't, that wasn't just two or three things in that thing. It was, it was 10 pages full of it. And, and here we are.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we do have a plan in place for this next audit. And while we are still behind and still working on our bank reconciliation, as soon as that's done, we should be ready to go. Matt Brown's doing a fantastic job.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm not sure if you can answer this question or Kelsey or Blair. I'm sorry, it's kind of on the spot, but the deficit for the building reserve fund, does that carry over into the 2022? What actually is the building reserve fund and where's the money?
So we're going to be doing a supplemental budget. And after we finish our bank reconciliation, we're going to be coming back and trying to show some of those pieces. I don't think there's as much of a deficit. I think there was a large error. So we'll be coming back to explain all of that in the near future. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, so I have a question on page 97, which I think is that final statement that the, that the auditors give us?
Okay, back to this.
There is a question about filing a financial statement with the state. Is that a yearly thing or a quarterly thing or? I was just wondering what kind of a statement they're asking for.
So what we're talking about here is the annual financial statements. So by the end of December of 2021, in this case, there's an online, you know, submission process with the audits division where a PDF copy of this is uploaded and then you pay the annual filing fee related to it. That's ultimately what we're talking about here.
Okay, so this letter that we received with all this information on it, does it correspond with pages 54 to 96 or whatever it is? I mean, so to speak.
So if we're talking this large letter here, the one with all of this in here, basically, all of these were recorded in your accounting system in order to get to these numbers in here. Because I won't put my name on this unless I feel this is materially accurate. It took all of these to get to that point.
Okay, okay. And so on page 54, you outline the expenditures in excess of the budget. Right?
Yes.
Which corresponds with all the rest of those numbers, right? I mean, this, this is kind of an accumulation of each fund.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Which totals about $700,000. It shows that was out of, out of.
Yeah, across all the different funds.
Right, that, that was unbalanced from the budget. Is that correct?
Well, what that means is that the amount that was spent within those categories, there wasn't enough appropriations by the city council in order to spend all of that money. So there should have been potentially a supplemental budget or something like that in order to bump it.
Which I understand we're going to do, which would then make it right.
Yeah, but this is for fiscal year 21 and 21, you can't go back and change anything related to that. We just have to worry about the current year.
I understand that. It's just that. Okay. I'm, I'm with Counselor Trask here. I'm blown away with all this. I really am. But I'm glad that we were able to get it to a point that satisfied you and satisfied the state. But I'm so glad we're not going to be in it again.
Any other questions, councilors? I want to thank you for coming and presenting the audit with us. I'm confident as a city that discussions with Kristi Ann, with Kelsey, that we have made adjustments to make sure this doesn't happen in the future.
Yeah, I would love to go back and do the presentation I did last time that I was here. These are never the best, you know, conversations to have for sure. But I just want to make sure that the city council knows how I stand related to and really what did happen during the audit. These changes can't be made if you don't know truly what's happening. So I appreciate you allowing me to sit here and talk through it with you.
Once again, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
I know that this is really an adjustment for us. But I would like to express gratitude that we're having that conversation right now rather than next year.
I think we, like I said, we made adjustments, but these places, so that we make sure this doesn't happen again. So see if it's on, right, back to, but that, that's done a good job. So that's off to. Nothing else for recognition of business hearing. That's the whole business. Going on my new business. City council meeting cancellation from November 22nd to December 27th. Any objections of councilors?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, it's going to be a Thursday, Friday thing? Anything? Is it going to be Thursday, Thursday and Friday? Thursday, obviously, we'll.
Thursday and Friday, yes.
Okay, so my next question is, and I don't have an issue with this, is it going to be a paid Friday? Or is it going to be a holiday for them? Or what's it going to be?
That Friday is currently part of our holiday schedule.
Pardon?
It is currently part of the listed holidays.
Okay, good. We're good. I'm good with that.
Okay, just clarify this council agenda item. This is a city council meeting cancellation discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, this is new cities. So it does, we can go ahead and do it by roll call, just, but motion of second to council, our council meetings for 22nd and 27th.
Some of.
Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman. Yes. Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes. On the record show, six eyes, no names, one absent approval of the county, city council meeting cancellations of number 22nd and December 27th. I mean, our next council meeting will be December 13th. RCA Resolution Number 32 for 2022, support on Oregon's mayor's association task force and homeless blind.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. So this is a something, right? Okay, God, it wasn't anything to do with me. So the Mayor's Association of Oregon has met and put together a task force. And what they're asking for is support from various cities on them having a budget that would have a direct allocation to two cities throughout Oregon to work with.
on them having a budget that would have a direct allocation to speci- to cities throughout Oregon to work with the issue and challenge of homelessness. And, um, so we'd be looking at about at least fifty thousand, um, being allocated to each city. I believe what they're actually allocating to Sweet Home, if this were to move forward, would be three hundred and ninety-five thousand. And this could be used for various projects. My understanding is capital improvement projects, if there was any type of additional sheltering or anything that we wanted to do there, security. Um, and this could provide funding for potential solutions. It'll probably take a while before something like this would, or to move forward, um, all the way. But if we did support this, it would provide additional funding that could be used as the council's top bets as we were moving forward. Or even potentially, um, for another nonprofits such as, um, F A C or so to manage. And there's a lot of different options that we could do with this. So this would just be us moving forward with supporting this initiative.
Any questions to council?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question. It seems like within the list, abatement and cleanup are some options.
Yes.
Would that include RV moving?
That's something we still need clarity on, but right now it looks like that could use be for RV abatement, even possibly, um, or RV sheltering areas. I think there's all kinds of things that could happen for that.
Thank you.
I actually got a letter from them and I asked if I was supporting this. I was actually supportive of it. I think it's a good initiative, so I'm not sure where our council, our councilors go.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number thirty-two for twenty twenty-two. I second that.
I was just thinking about roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Show them six eyes, no names. Resolution number thirty.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I didn't get to discuss anything for that one last. That's okay. I was trying to say something and we went straight. Um, can I just ask Kelsey one question? When we discussed this prior, um, beans that Sweet Home is the only place in Lynn County that has a low barrier shelter. Were we able to maybe discuss some additional allocations with this initiative? Or have a little bit more funding to, um, strengthen that?
Thank you for bringing that up. Um, in addition to this funding, they also are asking for a request of any type of capital projects that we might want to add to their list. Um, that could potentially strengthen our, since, as Counselor Sanchez mentioned, we are the only low barrier shelter right now in Lynn County. Um, and well, once it's built, we will be, yes. Um, and so there could be some additional items for security or abatement or shelter, I mean, storage or additional bathrooms or other pieces, or even transitional housing that could be added to bridge some of these gaps. So there's, this is really sort of the beginning of this discussion. Um, but in reaching out to them, they are open to some additional conversations and into potentially some additional funding, particularly for capital projects.
Thank you.
What kind of timeline would we be possibly looking at?
They're hoping to have a list of capital projects and a list of who is willing to support this by the end of this calendar, or this, yes, end of this calendar year. And then it's moving forward. As to beyond that, I am not completely sure I can find out exactly. I know they're hoping to get this finalized in the next couple of months.
Moving on, RCA for resolution number thirty-three for, for twenty-two, Amaresco Auto Service Agreement or LED streetlight conversion and sole source resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you think back, um, we had a presentation given to the council back in March of twenty twenty-one um, by Amaresco and Brian Jewitt from Amaresco is on the line in case, uh, your questions directly to them. But at that time, there was a presentation on how they work and essentially what. Let me, let me give you some background. Our streetlights are not owned by us. They are owned by Pacific Power and we pay for the power to those streetlights. And so, um, the type of, of lamp and how efficient they are with energy, we end up paying for. Pacific Power only upgrades those. It's a significant capital investment to upgrade those lights to something else. And the only time that Pacific Power actually does that is when there's a failure of a lamp of some kind or when you're putting in a new one. And so there's a, there's a little gap there where cities can't afford to make that change um, because of how much they cost and therefore can't take advantage of the savings that the lower rate would bring them if they were converted over to LEDs. Companies like Amaresco step in and essentially have worked out a deal where they, they work with Pacific Power and they work with the cities. And they provide kind of the, they fill in the gap where they, um, they pay for changing the lights over to LED. And then the city gets the new rates started and pays for those improvements out of the savings from those new rates. Essentially, um, over, it's worked out over a seven to ten year period typically. And it starts out by doing an audit to see exactly what needs to be done to the streetlights we have and kind of get some better numbers of how much this would cost. And that, and then based on that audit, they would have a financing agreement with the city that would dictate all the terms of how long it would take to, um, to pay off that, that work being done and what kind of city savings the city sees in the meantime. And then they, we can, they can provide more information on what savings we see after everything's all paid for. At the time, uh, when we had the last council meeting, when that was discussed, the consensus of council was to move forward with, uh, with Amaresco and bring a contract before you. In the meantime, we ran into, some staff ran into some concerns about our, uh, purchasing, our procurement policy and whether this fit, fit with what we were able to do and whether we would have to go out with our, an RFP, um, to advertise this or whether we could do a sole source procurement. At that time, we got some false information about that there were other companies that, that do this. It turns out that this Amaresco is the only company that have, that works with Pacific Power. Pacific Power doesn't go through this with anybody else. And so the city could, uh, pay a different firm to install the light, but we would be out of pocket the entire, uh, the entire amount. There wouldn't be any financing agreement to, to pay for that over time out of the saving. And so Amaresco really is the only option here, the only firm that does business with Pacific Power. Several other cities, uh, operate the same way and have, have entered into agreements with Amaresco and have put forward, uh, sole source procurement resolution to support that. And so what staff has done is they've put together, uh, the contract from Amaresco for your review in the packet. And we also put together the sole force procurement finding in the resolution and for, for you as well. If there are any changes that we're happy to make that or any questions we can answer. But though, if you want to move forward with this agreement, uh, it would start first by, uh, passing the full force procurement resolution. And it's, uh, proving the contract with Amaresco for the audit. After the audit is over with, then there would be, um, the agreement for the full financing deal with Amaresco. The one wrinkle here is that the, the audit agreement does have a cost. It is, um, approximately twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand dollars for that audit. If we move forward with Amaresco, it's no big deal. That gets wrapped up into the financing of the whole project. And there's no out of pocket for the city. If at the end of that audit, the city says, no, we changed our mind. We don't actually want to upgrade our, our streetlights to LED. Um, then we would be on the hook for that twenty-seven thousand dollars. So that's the, that's the only wrinkle for you to consider and I can take any questions that we have.
Questions of councilors?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm really happy to see this back. I was wondering what was taking so long. Thank you for the information. Um, is this including lights on Long Street too, or is it throughout the entire city? I think I remember that it was only in certain areas at Pacific.
Entire city Sweet Home is covered by Pacific Power. And the only streetlights that we own are the, I believe, the decorative streetlights in the middle of, of Main Street. We own those. And then, um, streetlights that are like onsite here at City Hall or at PD or, um, you know, on, on city property, that's not in the right of way. Those are, are lamps that we own ourselves and, and are, would not be a part of this project. But, um, we can, if we wish, add our own, in, any, any streetlights that we own, we could add to this project. The problem is there's no, there's no savings, uh, from that that we would gain. So, um, it would be, you would end up taking the saving that you're getting on the other street land, uh, lights and putting that toward, um, upgrading, uh, streetlights on, on other properties that we own. That's not necessarily a bad thing. It just cuts into the savings that the city could enjoy. But the audit will spell out a lot of those things.
So I'm, I'm for it because of the cost savings, but I'm also more for it because, um, it's just so dark in a lot of areas. And I do believe that increased lighting helps with some sort of nighttime activities. And I do believe that the citizens of the community would be very happy to have better lighting, especially with some of the crimes that occur late at night. So I think it would be a deterrent and I think we definitely should consider that when we think about how much cost it would be to us with how much reward we would get from having the brighter lights.
And that these lights typically will look brighter. They are more directional, so they, they are, you don't waste as much light on other areas. They, they mainly go where they're pointed. And so it does, uh, improve things when it comes to dark sky initiatives to, to try to have less light leakage into the, into the sky. What this may also reveal through the audit is it may reveal some areas where we would want additional streetlight. That will cost additional funding, but it could be that the savings from these, these streetlights that we're converting over could help pay for that.
I think we need to look at it from a long-term perspective too, because July first next year, the incandescence and solvents and all that are going away. So LED is it. So while they're doing the, the, the work and everything, my little one time and including our, our city hall and our place and and stuff that is we own too. I think we need to take advantage of that, do it all.
Mr. Mayor, I, I agree, uh, with Counselor Sanchez. Would somebody write that down?
It's on the recording.
Uh, I, I agree. It, it has taken a long time because I don't know when it was brought up, but it's been a long time ago. And I think we should do the same thing as, as the mayor said, I, we, we need to do them all. Why would we want to do half of them or whatever? Now, that also includes in the avenues. Is that not true?
Well, any, any streetlight.
Right, okay. So that, that's, that'd be really a big deal for the, those avenues because there, a lot of those P P and L lights are really not very good. And it's not their fault, you know, it just costs a lot of money. Now, did I say, did it say in the, we, when this is all said and done, it will save us seventy thousand and we'll end up paying that to them? Is that the way that, was it seventy thousand?
It, the estimate was seventy-three thousand dollars annually would be saved in, in today's dollars. Um, it, it didn't specify that all of that savings would go toward paying off the, the financing. A lot of times the way they structure it, and, and Brian Jewitt from Amaresco is on the line and probably could speak to this more, but from what I've seen, a lot of times they'll structure it so you still have some savings. Um, uh, but then the bulk of it is actually, it's paid to, to finance the project. And then at the end of the project, you have the entire savings up. Brian, are you, you hearing it?
Uh, yep. Blair, I am here and you said it well. Um, we, you know, from this audit, we're going to calculate the savings and kind of give you a number and we can structure how much savings goes to the financing period and how long, um, this audit will really be able to give us those numbers.
Oh, refresh my memory here. We were talking more than the LED light itself, but also for our downtown area, stylized lights possibly. And then because we have streetlights that don't have a plug-in, so we can't do plug-in Christmas lights and that kind of thing where we could be looking at changing that up with it.
So that's, that's kind of a, a mixture of a couple of different projects. Then we, we did go through the streetscape plan that identified, uh, lighting improvements that we would like to see in downtown. This particular project, um, it, it could involve those, but it wouldn't, um, it, it doesn't have to. The, the, that's something that would essentially cut into the savings that we would enjoy because it would utilize that to pay for some additions. But from, uh, Brian, if you could confirm that, uh, we've talked that adding lights in certain areas, uh, that the city would own can be included in this project. It just cuts into the bottom line of the savings. Is that correct?
Yeah, adding a new pole and a new fixture, that is more capital than savings and you're also adding usage to your, the, you know, electricity. Um, but again, we can leverage the saving, like you said, we can leverage the savings from one portion of the project to pay for the capital investment of adding poles. Um, yeah, that it's doable.
So that's something that we can, we can bring some possibilities to you for, in fact, of interest. But it's just something that people would be aware of that we're going to have to pay for.
Okay, but if we're looking at streetscaping, anyway, we need to make sure we don't let that fall off the table.
Any other questions? Council directive.
Some moved as recommended.
Second.
Just thinking about roll call, please.
Counselor Trask.
Uh, yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
As the record shows, we have six eyes, no names, one absent approval of resolution number thirty-three for twenty-two. Next up RCA, R, the RF equipment repurchase and interim improvement project.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilors, um, kind of give you a little, um, brief of how we got here. I have an RCA in front of you for the Mahler Water Reclamation Facility, uh, equipment pre-purchase and interim improvement project. If you remember, in August, we put out the bid, our phase one, uh, we received those bids back in September. Um, those bids came in over twenty-five percent higher, um, than what the engineer's estimate was. And so our procurement policy, the city's procurement policy does not allow us to, uh, move forward with that. So we have gone back to the drawing board. At the same time, we started having, um, we started having some treatment issues at the wastewater plant in August and in September. Um, at that time, I brought on a consultant, which I'll be talking about here in a couple more, uh, ads here. Um, so what was happening is, is we brought him, I started working with this consultant. Um, he was interacting with us with D Q, um, and trying to resolve the compliance issues. At the same time, we're also trying to figure out how we're going to get to the inline of, um, operating this plant, current plant while we're building the new plant. Um, through discussion with our consultant and Stephen and we, we drew in Preston. Um, we've, we needed to figure out a path to, um, to get to the ending. And the issues that we're having is around our solids. Um, for those of you that have come out and toured the wastewater plant and have looked at that belt press, it is extremely old. Um, troublesome. Um, we spend a lot of hours operating it daily. And we spend a lot of time maintaining that and we keep parts on the shelf. I have concerns and Stephen has concerns and so does a consultant about how long that's going to last over the next three years. Um, his recommendations were to put about a hundred grand into an existing tank onsite that we would have had to tear down. Um, that would allow us to, to move some solids around, um, give us time to push it through that belt press on our time, not on the plant's time. So basically what's happening is we get a buildup of solids and we're trying to remove them out and, and the piece of equipment breaks. So then we get behind. Um, and so it has been creating operational issues for us. And because of that, if we have more solids, um, we don't have great abilities to, uh, control the dissolved oxygen in there to, uh, achieve adequate treatment. I'll try to get out of the weeds here, but basically we want to be able to get solids out of the plant quicker. Um, we want to be able to be more efficient. We want to spread it over time. So I drug in, um, the engineering team and what they did was started looking at, um, our future, in other words, our phase two or whatever we were going to do and we started looking at our solids. Um, we want to propose with this RCA is to pre-purchase, you know, a, a generator and some switch gears, but we also want to install, um, we want to install a, a sledge tank that then we can then pump to out of our system. And then we also want to purchase, um, some pre-equipment, um, that we can then put back into the new building. So this stuff is, is stuff we could use again. So this stuff is, is stuff we could use again. Um, by doing this project and, and spending the money there, it's going to ensure that we're going to get to the finish line. We're going to get away with that old belt press. It's going to help our efficiencies. We'll have to change some polymers around to help it, uh, achieve the dryness that we need to do. Um, but with that, I, I have this here. We, we believe this is the, the best path for us for where we're at. We can spend the money quickly. Um, and, and right now we're challenged to spend that seven million by, by the end of June. Um, I, I know I talked with press and there's some of the parts that, that the vendors are saying they can get it to us by May. Um, so right now this is the path that we're recommending. If you have any questions, I have the team here for you. Um, but, but we feel this would be good money spent. Um, we're not just clearing off some property, um, pre, pre-purchase some equipment that's going to come and be installed. This will give us value, uh, for the next three years while we go through the, the, the phase of building this full plant. Um, if you have any questions, I have a full team here, so feel free to fire away as, as needed. But we're looking for approval to do the pre-equipment and also start on that lower phase and start doing some sledge work.
Questions of councils? Mr. Mayor, if I may, Greg, what's the cost going to be for that? Just approximately, you don't have to look all of them.
So it's, it's about, um, proposed about four million. I know the sum of it's 10%. Let me get here.
That, that's okay.
Can we, can I just clarify too? That would be coming out of that ground funds.
Yes.
And this would all be part of the same of moving towards the wastewater treatment plant. So this is just preliminary work.
Element one is 275,000, um, roughly, right? Um, element two, um, which is electrical equipment pre-purchase, um, we're estimating expenditures through about 139,490. And element three would finish the design at 1.25 million. And then we're proposing to finish that design April-ish or in there? June, August? August, okay. Okay.
All right. If that's the case, then are we going to get past the July?
This is phase two, like the
Okay.
Oh, this is just for this, this is just an interim project that we're going to spend this money, we're going to finish design. But that design he's saying would be finished in August. Um, and so we're going to try to spend all that money by June.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. So this is going to be a stinky question.
Sure. Kind of used to them lately.
Will it help with processing the volume and whatever takes place during?
Yeah, look, I'm going to do something different. Even, you want to come up and talk about that just briefly? Hiya.
Yes.
Sold.
And you have to speak into the mic too.
Briefly, yes. Um, it, it won't eliminate it completely. There's a lot of issues. But being able to get the pounds out consistently and evenly as we need to, it, it should help with odors considerably. Might cause other issues in the interim that we're not expecting. This is hard to tell because it's, it's a piece of a total puzzle. And it'll help, but without that total puzzle, we won't really know the complete answer.
Well, I'm just asking because I think residents of our community would be happy to know that if this is the way that we're going to move forward potentially resolve some of those issues a lot, so.
It's to definitely reduce them. Well, eliminate, limit them, uh, eliminate them? No. No false pretense.
So one of the things that we're, we're doing now that we weren't doing before is monitoring DO at levels throughout our tanks. We don't have a requirement for that, but once we got the consultant on board, he is kind of, Mark has created a, a matrix of different things that we don't monitor for, we, we aren't testing for, we purchased some equipment. Um, and now staff has been trained. One of the things he did was come out and work with this matrix, but he's also, and I'll discuss that some, uh, gee, tonight. So he's going to be doing a plan for us to, to get to that point too, because DQ wants an operation plan from us. One of the things that they asked us to do was more dissolved oxygen readings. Dissolved oxygen is a key indicator of pollutants that are coming in and, and putting the loading on our system. We weren't doing that because it's not required. We don't have equipment that does that. A lot of newer plants, like our new plant will have it. Um, staff on a daily basis is going through those tanks a couple of times a day and, and checking for DO readings. Dissolved oxygen, those, if they dip, then there are things that they can do to make sure that there's enough oxygen. Low oxygen, higher odors. So it's kind of the relationship.
Unfortunately, we can't, we can't do anything when it dips because the plant's so old. But now, so that's part of the reason we didn't monitor DO originally. We have no control. Our aerators run at a hundred percent speed, as fast as we can run all the time. And we don't have enough. And that's a lot of the reason, the violations you guys have seen in the reports and they're still continuing. They minimized considerably from the, uh, August and, uh, September numbers, but they're still continuing a little bit because we can't control the oxygen. It's the 1974 plant with answer for everything.
The, the population back then was 3,400. We're at 10,000 now. And it doesn't have the ability to take large loads and move them around. We, we have to be able to be more efficient to get it out. And if we don't do, I think, do this interim, we will have probably more issues as we try to get through this construction. So for me, it was a no-brainer to bring Preston in and say, how do we solve this? And, and this was how we came to that.
So with the aeration factor, is there something that you could add to this to get better results?
Not without spending a lot of money or a lot of chemicals.
Okay.
Yeah. But it would probably take more money to put some sort of another diffuser of some sort or another mixer. And it just, it's not value money right now. I mean, it's not, we, we, we tear it out and throw it away.
And being able to get the solids out quicker with what we're doing, proposing, actually less solids, less oxygen demand, which means you have more oxygen. It'll actually help with our oxygen. So the so, the solids sounds simple, but solids are the key to a wastewater plant. They help so many other things when you can manage them properly and we can't right now. And we still won't be able to with this interim project, but it'll help us manage them better.
Bugs when they have low DO can't handle slug loads. And if we had low DO when we got slugged, it probably caused our death of the plant. I mean, that's the theory right now. And so we're trying to stabilize the sludge side and also the oxygen side. That's kind of where we've been making our progress, so.
So thank you for being on top of this. And I know we can continue to talk about stinky situations, but I think it's obvious we need to make, move forward on this. So, um, I'm, I move that we, um, accept the staff's recommendations on this.
I'll second that.
Second, my roll call please.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gerson?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes. I can show you have six eyes, no names, one absent approval of Mahler WRF equipment pre-purchase. Next up is the RCA for Mahler.
No. Just getting started.
Outfall replacement.
Okay. So how did we get here? Um, Mahler Water Reclamation Facility Outfall Replacement. The project all along is our goal was to stay out of the river. The reason we wanted to stay out of the river is because we knew we were going to go through a bigger red tape hurdle with USDA and, um, with other marine fisheries reviews. Um, we were trying to stay in what we call like an environmental review where they just do this high up, look at the project. They like what we do and then we wouldn't be getting diving in and having all these other agencies, uh, looking at what we're doing with this project. So what we were trying to do is with the outfall, we know at 2000 or 2040 that we were going to get into a situation where we may not have enough capacity in that outfall. Bringing it up to 12 billion MGD, we would have capacity. Um, so what we were going to do is put an overflow on that and get it into the creek without doing any work in the creek or even near it. But it was obvious as we got into some of our reviews, um, with USDA and, uh, when we started looking at other federal agencies, that they had some issues with potential adverse effects with this project or the river. And the reason the adverse effects was we have two permitted, and I'll let you guys talk about permits if we get there. Um, we have two outfalls. We have the main outfall that's in San Yana River, but we also have a secondary that's recognized as an outfall that when the plant takes in X amount of flow and it hits its peak, everything else overflows and goes into Ames Creek. So we're sending raw sewage at heavy peak flows into Ames Creek that then goes into San Yana River. So we're not treating that flow. What we want to do with this plant is open up the throat of that and get all that flow into the plant. But at 2040, we knew there was going to be potential capacity issues. So once we started issuing or started meeting with, with USDA, um, there started sniffing around that they may want to do an environmental review based on adverse effects because we want to eliminate, eliminate the one discharge point and put everything through the outfall. So if we have to go through this environmental assessment, um, we might as well go ahead and work in the creek now. Um, and we're going to go ahead and what this RCA is for you guys to consider is for us to put this into the project. Um, I believe we would be using controlled funds for it to be worked, right? The control funds is what we have in the but current budget wastewater budget. What we would need is for Pacific Habitat, which is an environmental group that is working for us as a sub on this project. They will be working with these agencies to get through that environmental assessment. Um, and so we want to take some of those funds that are on the project that are us to control. I believe there was 190,000 roughly. We want to take some of those funds and then use it for this. And that's what we're here asking you tonight. We, we knew we had to do some upsizing, but if we got to do this review, this full assessment, we might as well go ahead and upsize it at this point. Pipe's cheap after that, clearly is.
Any questions, the council?
Council directive.
So moved as recommended.
Second.
Second, my roll call please.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Gerson? Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Let the director show up, six eyes, no names, one absent approval of the Mahler WRF outfall replacement. Next up is information only task order number 13, Operational Process Control and Plant Development Services Project.
So backtracking, ever since we had owner problems, um, we have a consultant that's been, he's been on, uh, the engineer record since we, we established that contract. Water Dude Solutions helped us, if you remember back when we took over the plant from Jacobs. They did some work and, and went in and, and, and determined a budget for us. And so we worked with Mark and, and this project. When we started, DQ was going to show up and we had some issues and they, they gave us a letter of all these things that they recommended we start doing. One of the things that they wanted us to do was to, to advise with a consultant, just to make sure that we were on track. Um, also they had concerns with our operations plan. The operations plan is a seventies, 1970s document. Jacobs has made some updates to it, but it's an old document. It doesn't take in consideration reading DO and all these other things. And so DQ is asking us to a few things. Consult with a consultant to ensure that we're on the right track, update our plan. Um, they're going to want that. They're kind of pushing on that. Um, and also, um, have them on site to consult whatever we need to do, um, as those times arise. Um, we have, I brought him in back in September. He's been working for us. I will pay him. I have money in my annual budget for professional services. Uh, this is information only, um, but I plan to use those funds to pay him. He's already done some training. Um, he's working on the plan currently, but I just wanted to be transparent to you guys and let you know that this task order is here and that we're going to be spending that money out of my annual budget.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, just add one additional point. This was already approved as part of the contract between Sweet Home and West Coast. So this is just, just to make sure you all are aware of how this is moving forward. And if I could add one more thing too. Um, staff has been going above and beyond and trying to make sure that they're meeting all of DEQs and exceeding DEQ's requirements. And so this is part of that as well.
Thanks Greg, and all your updates and everything you're doing. And thanks Steve and Trish and all you guys with all your efforts. Mainly you.
Trish, next man, yeah.
Anyway, um, next up RCA, resolution number 34 for 2022 Parade of Lights.
Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, as you know, Christmas is coming. And so this is the, uh, we received an application from the Chamber of Commerce that were represented here tonight, um, for the annual parade of lights. It'll be December tenth. Yes. And the, one of the goals with this year is to try to get back to a, um, utilizing Main Street as well as Long Street. Uh, because of, of the, how much easier it makes it with looping the, uh, the participants. Hasn't been done for, for several years, but, um, it's already been approved by ODOT to, to move forward with that. So, um, everything is in the RCA. And then we have the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce here that can also speak more about it if you would like. But also I can take any question.
Any questions of council?
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm just really surprised ODOT approved this. Is the road going to be ready for a parade on it? Any, any news to that? Just ask.
ODOT's approval for the parade actually happened before the construction. You might be regretting it now.
I'm excited for this parade. I just was clarifying, so.
Yeah. Would you like to add anything to this? Said you made the effort coming this evening.
I think I know how to handle this one. All right. Counselor Coleman, um, Legimo Executive Director, Chamber of Commerce, 1575 Main Street. Um, so yes, fortunately, ODOT did approve this permit back in May. Um, so hopefully they're aware of their own project. Um, but one of the things that is happening is the construction does not happen on Saturday when we hope to have that. So, um, we will, the biggest thing is when we have this parade and it's just on Long Street, it's the dispersal. Yeah, it's not my responsibility to manage the audio system here anymore. So, um, it's the dispersal of the floats at the end of the parade that is the most dangerous. So having barricades around holes in ground on the sidewalk, I would say that is safer than us trying to offload floats at the end of a parade in the dark. So that, so, um, since ODOT has already approved it, I would ask kindly that the council would approve and knowing that, yes, they have this project going and it's projected to go until April of 2023. So, um, yes, I just think it would be a wonderful thing. We have not had the opportunity to have it go Main Street long since, um, the 2018 US Capitol Christmas Tree Parade. So, um, so this would be, and ODOT was not allowing parades because of COVID, because of all of that. And, um, our illustrious Chief Lynn was also not a fan of them either. So it would usually die before, we just wouldn't even submit them. So, um, so my ask is that we, since ODOT approved this back in May, that the council would go ahead and, um, let us have this celebration. So.
Mr. Mayor, one more question or comment. I was on a, um, a parade once that had to unload at the end of Long Street. And it, it looked disastrous as we had children on our float and other people did as well. And, um, it was very dangerous. So I liked the, the route, um, being a circle. And thank you, Chief Ogden, for allowing it.
I think it's a good thing we should move.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I agree. We need to have that thing, but what concern I'm going to have is the traffic going both ways on the north side of the, the highway. Is it, it's going to be on the south side, right? The parade?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
That would be my only concern and I don't, I hope, it surely won't be anything but because they put all the stuff on there and get all the life. Yeah. So that would be my only concern, but I think they'll take care of that. And so I thought to begin with it.
Right.
We'll also have to light any intersections that have crossings. And so we have already reserved, we don't have those type of lights for night type work, but we already made contacts and I believe it's, it's, they're not very much for a 20. made contacts and I believe it's, it's, they're not very much for a 24 hour rental. So for a couple hundred bucks, we'll have every inner, I think three of the major intersections that have crossings will be lit.
Well, something else.
Staffing and the, the speed limit is also reduced and people are going to be inclined to slow down when they see all those cool vehicles lit up for the Christmas time. They're going to slow down as they drive through. So that, and there's a number of areas where you're going to have traffic, I mean, to 28. People are not driving slow and it's a two lane. So.
You, you might ask the fire district, they've got some equipment that has lights that go up that you could possibly use at certain, I see wherever the biggest problem they might have, like 18th Avenue or 12th Avenue or something, and they could put those things up and they, they'll light up a whole a whole road there. So it would be, and they're not very big. There's only two of them, I think, that have those and really, really LED lights, are they?
That's good information. Thank you.
Yeah.
So Mr. Mayor, I just have one business question. I didn't see in here the insurance. Is that all taken care of?
Yes, we do have that. And so I thought that we included that in there, but I will make sure that this city staff, I thought that was emailed to city staff, but we'll make sure it happens. Okay.
Thank you. We do have that insurance.
Mr. Mayor, so moved as recommended.
Second. I'll say it by roll call, please.
Counselor Sanchez. So Hanukkah is a festival of lights and I say more lights, the merrier. We should have some blue lights and take this one. Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
No way. Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Counsel Gerson.
Yes.
And Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Let the record show six eyes, no names, one absent approval of the parade of lights.
Thank you, counselors.
There's no ordinance bills, reports to committees.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so we don't have this as a committee on here yet, but I'm really excited that FAC is going to have our first board meeting with me and the other members on it, the 16th of this month, and I will be happy to report on it at our next council meeting in December.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to draw a council's attention to the library report that's here. And I've asked Megan to give a review of an element on there because it was brought, an element on this report was brought up in a public meeting. So Megan, if you would just review the fine free library.
So last year around November, the library board agreed with me to try a trial period of being a fine free library for three months. At that point, what we were averaging was in taking about $40 a month in fines. This is only the fines for overdue. This is not any other money that we're bringing in. It's just fines. We ended up, we were sending out over 90 overdue letters per month because we don't have an automated system for all of the letters because some people still want mail instead of email. For all of those, we were paying for all the cost of postage and letter, you know, letterhead and all of that plus staff time to do that. What we are finding is we are getting the same amount of books back, if not a few more back now that we have no fines. We are saving a lot of staff time. It's a far better use of our budget and our staff to not have these fines with the low amount that we were bringing in. If I had the stats for how many books. We don't have kids that are blocked from getting books. So we don't have kids, you know, wanting to have, bringing books up, wanting to check them out. We're saying, sorry, you have $5 you have to pay before your parents can check this out. They can check those out. We don't have negative interactions with patrons anymore about fines. We do still have a few negative interactions. It's not getting rid of everything, but around fines, those are gone. Staff have more time for other projects. We also inspired both Lebanon and Albany to become at least partially fine free at their libraries. Because they figured if Sweet Home was doing it, they should too, but we got there first. So I think that's a proud moment there. And really being fine free has become an asset to our community with such a high poverty rate in the community. Those are the people that are using the books the most and the fines are the ones that are affecting them the most. Even if you're looking at it of, well, 10 cents isn't that much. To some people it is a lot. And it's a much better use of our time and our budget to not have these fines. Are there any other questions about that?
No, but thank you, Megan.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just want to say that I think it's wonderful. I know that some people don't appreciate that we are fine free, but as a single mom, many years ago, I was in debt to the library and I would have to wait until I brought canned foods in to get my fines reduced or forgiven. So my kids could check out books. So because we are a low income community, I'm just really thankful that the kids still have the opportunity to read. So thank you.
And as you know, that's from the beginning of that, our stats, we have checked out a lot more books this year than the previous year. A little bit of that may be COVID, but some of that is from fines and people coming back.
Mr. Mayor, the ad hoc committee, health committee will be meeting Thursday at 5:30. We've moved to the second Thursday each month. So I'd like to remind everybody that we will be meeting this week. And we also had a large project go on on Saturday at the high school where they were building huts for the new sleep center. So it was really exciting. I'd like to report that for the first shift, we had 70 people. And by the time the end of the day had happened, we had people still showing up and staying and not wanting to leave until they were all out of supplies. And we had over a hundred people volunteer to build and they had a great time. Students with power tools and community members who had a lot of experience building, it was amazing. It was fun. We had people bring refreshments and it was a wonderful day and it's very exciting. And I'm already getting calls about when we're going to do it again. So.
Also, reports committees. I have another one, the mayor's report, city manager's report.
So I just have a few things. One, our election is occurring at this moment. Actually just closed at eight o'clock. And the results should be available on the county website very soon. If they aren't there already. We also have gotten quite a few questions about the city's involvement in the elections. And I just wanted to answer some of those questions for our, our community members. So the city isn't, I mean, really like the city staff is not involved in the elections. We wish everybody the best of luck. And we also are not able to provide any information to the county for, in the actual pamphlets about any of our council candidates. Right now, the county will only post for cities over a certain population. So if you actually look in the pamphlets, only Albany that is able to put that information in there. So I know there's been some questions about that. We're kind of hopeful that at some point that might change because that can be a very useful tool for all of the community to be able to look at that. But anyway, so that's where that is, but best of luck to everybody. Also, we have some police chief interviews coming up. So we're going to be conducting our interviews on November 16th and then we are going to have an actual meet and greet with our finalists on November 30th right here. And it'll be very similar to the city managers meet and greets and forums. So really like to invite the entire community to come out and meet the candidates and and just participate in this where we go ahead and select our police chief. And then I'm also offering office hours for anyone in the community who would like to come and ask some questions about how the city works or anything that I can answer or any questions that they may have. Right now they're every Thursday except for Thanksgiving or another holiday from 1:00 to 2:30. But if that time doesn't work, please feel free to contact us and I can set up another time as well. But just would like to hear the community's concerns and questions as well. And then I can bring them back to council if there's anything that I think we need to discuss. And I think that's about it. We are. Oh, thank you. Yes, that's right here. And that was actually the most important one. Thanks, Julie. So we have, we're planning commissioners and two park and tree committee members that we need to have that are expiring. So we would need to have an admin and finance meeting and we would like to request it for December 6th. That would be the first Tuesday in December, if that would work for everybody. Would that be okay? Okay, great. All right. We'll get that scheduled then. Thank you.
December 6th.
It's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday. But let's do that then. Let's do one then, if that works for you. Okay, great. Thank you.
Are we anywhere close to getting the finance person here or we're going to wait till after the first year or do we have any idea yet?
So that's a great question. We're looking at a couple of different options. Right now we have a couple additional candidates that we're reviewing and determining if we want to move forward with interviews. So we also have, our listing hasn't closed yet, so we're still hoping to get some candidates. We've made a few different reaches out to various areas as well. And I'm talking to a couple of potential executive recruiters as well to see if we want to go that route. We also have an option to have a longer consultant contract with Matt Brown. I keep trying to get him to become our permanent and he hasn't agreed to that because he likes his other position as well. But he is interested in us having a longer part-time finance director position. So we're still weighing our options, trying to determine what would be best. Matt's doing a fantastic job. And so in some ways, until we do find that perfect candidate, that could be a very good way to go. But it would be very nice to have a full-time finance director who is in-house. So there are some other things that I might want to discuss with the council on like whether or not we could do a recruitment bonus or some other pieces like that, just because it is so challenging to get a finance director. That is one of the most sought after positions. There's the most vacancies in, in cities and almost nationwide right now for finance directors. So we may want to discuss ways we can become a little bit more competitive. I've had quite a few conversations with people where it sounds like we might be able to move forward and then they've taken another position. So that is something I think we still need to discuss, but that's where we are right now. And we're hopeful to that we might find a couple additional applicants. There have been some people that have expressed interest that haven't applied yet. So we are hoping that they will as well.
Department of Directors reports, any for the directors?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question, if I can, for Greg. Do we know where this excess is coming from yet? Or we have any indication? All the slugs that you mentioned and/or the exceeding four times the highest, you know, anything, any indication?
No.
No.
The volume indicates that it would be a small business. It wouldn't be a normal home. It wouldn't come from a vehicle like a dumped on a truck. It was sustained flow for three to four hours. About quarter of a million gallons. So if you can think about that, that's a lot of flow. So again, we, we have a sampler. We prepared, we have, we take samples weekly. And if it comes in again, we will run it. We have the bottles already pre-preserved from our laboratory. There's certain things that we want to test for. It's expensive because I want to do a gamut on everything. We haven't had it come in as well. And again, we talked about DO earlier, our dissolved oxygen. We, we are working hard. Our staff is working hard to monitor our sludge level and how its health is. We just don't have that technology. Again, if we see drops in DO, it gives us another indicator that we could maybe collect some more samples as well. But as of right now, we haven't had.
Has, was the last time in August or did it happen again in September?
So we had a couple of, in August, we had a couple of different slug loads like that. The plant was already suffering when we got the second one. And so we did notice the next day that our bug life had, had gone to zero and we started repopulating again. That, after that, I did an article, I worked with our new era, we talked about some things, some concerns. And there was a reason for that because I want to educate in multiple ways. And so my hopes is that it got to the right people maybe and that I did some good there. But ultimate, we were prepared, if it comes in again, to collect samples and categorize it.
So it's kind of funny. It's a coincidence that there's one facility, not mentioning the name, that was doing maintenance during that month.
So I mean. That's been one of our questions, that it's not a typical discharge. It was out of, it's out of the norm of what we normally see on our charts. So. And I, I've done pretreatment for quite a few years and this isn't my first rodeo. I've had EPA, I've had California Water Control Board. And these are guys that have badges and guns and they look at for environmental crimes. You start with categorizing the waste. And then you can understand what people have on sites at that point. So and it's still difficult. It's not, it's not easy, right? And then, then you have to have the burden of proof. So, but the object is to educate. Educate goes, education goes much further than the stick, I guess, right?
So you can't be judge and jury on coincidences, but it definitely narrows it down.
I, I guess I was just mostly, the 33 exceedances in the month of September, were they connected with that?
So let, let's explain. When I say, last month you said, how's the plant doing? I said, it's doing much better. We are always 30 plus days behind on our reporting because we take samples. It then takes 30 days to get our samples back. And then we report it. So it's, it's almost like 60 days before. So we're always going to be behind on our reporting. Plant is doing much better. We've had some exceedances here and there, but nothing like you saw September, August, and I think a little bit in October.
And they're not connected? That's, I guess that's what I was wondering about.
Connected in how? Like?
Do we think it's the same business?
Well, I don't know. I don't know.
Okay.
Right? I, I think based on what we saw on our charts, it's only a handful, right? There's only a few people. There's only a few businesses. There's only a few customers. And the fact that we didn't see this amount of water on our production side, you know, it kind of leaves, then you start looking at wells and other things. So my hopes, my greatest hopes is that this, we don't have to do this again. And that we have better controls to see it. The new plant will have all these controls. We, we physically staff goes out there with a manual DO reading and they drop it on a fishing reel. And that's how we're doing it. A lot of these plants have this stuff already, the, the controls there, the, the, the units, the, that, that read. And so a lot of, a lot of manual work right now, but they're doing it. And plant, I was out there today, it looks good. We, during the event, we didn't have any ducks in our clarifiers. We had about 10 ducks in there today. They were all eating, looked happy. So.
Good. Thank you.
Anything else from the directors' reports? Hey, council business good order. I want to say to not only city staff, but my fellow counselors, I hope you have a wonderful Thanksgiving. So anything else for council business, good order?
There's a meet and greet tomorrow hosted by Sweet Home Community Foundation, which our illustrious city, new city manager will be at and the executive director for the Chamber of Commerce and police chief. So come and engage with them.
So come and engage with them.
That thing so wide, I thought for sure it was going to fit on her when I go.